According.
All right, Skylar Community Schools in its partnership with parents, students, and the community is committed to educating students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in a global society. Notice the meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice of the meeting to the public. Notice of the meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting has been preceded by advanced notice and is hereby declared to be an open session. Copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in front of the boarding, in front of the meeting room. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Moving seconded, any good discussion or comments?
The only comment that, the only comment that I have on that is what I just mentioned it is that it still appears Mrs. Holykilts name on the agenda. But I think it's noted already.
We will take care of that. Thank you.
Robert.
Yes.
Lanusa.
Yes.
Misha.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Babacik.
Yes. Public forum. We have any guests that wish to speak? We will limit their comments to five minutes.
No.
No one? Okay. All right, we'll move on to student rep report is not here and she had anything that she submitted.
Maybe the principal will help us out, student council's Christmas sweater.
It's on the agenda. It was on there.
So.
Good.
It's good. Volunteering out in the community, that's always good, good to see on reports.
Wasn't there a dodgeball tournament in the last couple of weeks ago? How'd that go over?
I did not attend, but from all indications, the kids had a good time, handled themselves well. It was a good turnout.
Great. No ambulance was required?
No work been come.
Good. All right. Overnight trip. I move to approve staff members' request for an overnight trip.
Second it.
Discussion.
This is our fourth year of doing this, this trip with our kids and Shanda Hall is the, is the sponsor now. And I've heard great things from the people who go on the trip with them. It's pretty much, it's pretty much a neutral thing for us. We did check with our insurance carrier just to make sure that we weren't opening up some liability that we were. They're, they were good with it, so. It isn't required that it's court approval, but I think it's important that you guys know because of your board policy, it just talks about overnight trips, but, but we've been bringing it to you for approval, so I brought it back, so.
That program, that's on a, like a two-year cycle, every other year that there's a trip?
Every year. No, they've been going every year.
Every year. I think it used to be when Trent, the English teacher at the junior high was doing it for a few years. I'm using it.
Okay.
Yeah. And they were doing it like every other year, I think. But they involved a couple of class, you know, if you're in these grades, you can go type of things.
There's been no concerns or problems for us to be concerned about. It's been positive news coming back from the trip.
Okay, that's what I've heard. Parents and kids, it's also.
Yes.
It's not cheap for them.
Only get a, come up with some dollars and or fundraising to cover that, so. Sal, you want to call it all?
Lanusa.
Yes.
Misha.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Babacik.
Yes.
Yes. Staff, staff resignations.
Make the motion to accept staff resignations as presented.
I'll second that motion.
A discussion.
If we could amend that motion, because one, one of the resignations is a teacher whose husband got a transfer to Missouri. And so what you'd have to do is not only accept a resignation, but you'd also have to release her from a contract in order for her to be able to get another job. So if you would amend your motion to, to also include and release her from her teaching contract.
This is good. We'll get to use some parliamentary procedure here.
This is just because of the practice you went to go look at, right?
Right.
All right. So show us how it's done there, Brian.
I move to amend the main motion by adding and release Mrs. Patricia Fellers from her contract.
I'll second that. All right, so I'll, we will vote on the amendment and then vote, and then vote on the main motion, so, so call the roll for the amendment.
Okay, Misha.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Babacik.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Lanusa.
Yes.
Okay, and on the motion.
Okay, just something on this one, just for clarification, sometimes you put into the motion that upon, upon finding a suitable replacement, we, we were short a special ed teacher at the start of the year and we were able to recruit and get us, get a new special ed teacher who also has an elementary position in North Texas. And she's a good teacher, so if, yes, we aren't able to land a good fourth grade teacher, we would move her into that and then we, we continue the same way we were. So the suitable replacement is on the board agenda for approval tonight. Okay, but if there's a better replacement coming in, then we'll use that, okay?
So you ready, Sally? Go ahead.
Sure. Um, let's. Misha.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Semrad.
I don't know, do I abstain because I really don't know what you were talking about?
We'll just, Babacik.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Lanusa.
Yes.
Move on to resignations.
No recommendations, new hires.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Done with that one already.
I went back. We'll get us, get it. Put, put us on the right track.
Make the motion to approve new hire recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
And we have two food service people. We have one current at the middle school that's on, that's on medical leave. And so that's for that position and then we were always short that one at the high school. We were just hiring subs to do that one. And so the sub isn't coming and so we get hired or we're recommending hiring that position filled. The head start teacher with our, with our early childhood funds, we either pay head start because they're a partner in it and they hire the teacher, but they have not been able to find a teacher. And so we had a student teacher in our building first semester who has another childhood endorsement and so she's, she would be going to the, to the head start program second semester. And then the suitable replacement that I just talked about, she will either go on as a special ed teacher right now, but if we aren't able to find a good classroom teacher, we'll move her to the classroom. So Hannah settled check and I'll hand her good years.
Comments, your questions? Sally, call the roll.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Semrad.
Yes.
Babacik.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Lanusa.
Yes.
Misha.
Yes.
All right, we'll go backwards again. We'll go forward to the priority report, priorities group report.
Administrator, just discussion item, we do have the report. Any questions, comments about where you think you're at in the first semester, what's your priority work that you've done? Just sort of briefly.
Seems like we're on track a lot there, Brian. All the things we've done before, we're still doing some adding new things. Teaching studies is new, and we're getting more teachers on a formal basis. It's an exchange with new teacher and older teacher. So that's one of these things.
So do they group those teachers or do they just take basically a pot of English or?
They're ranked, first, second, third, and fourth. Usually fourth is a very young teacher, first year, and number one is the older veteran teacher. And then they're just kind of next to wings in the middle.
There's been a lot of work being done. There's still a lot of work to do. You know, I just say that we continue to work at the process and report back and just kind of attacking that elephant one bite at a time.
Can I say the same thing? The teaching studies was highlighted this month. I really think the process is really a neat process for our teachers. I've known, I've learned quite a bit from it, from one section to the other, that being able to have teachers give feedback to each other is kind of a safe environment. I definitely saw also our veteran teachers take some examples from their younger teachers as well. So I think it's a good new process for everybody. I don't know what to highlight next month, but last month they highlighted absenteeism and chronic absenteeism and tardies and those types of things. And we're still doing a lot of work on those past systems just to keep those good. So it's been, it's been a good process, but it is a monster. It's just a ton of work. I'm glad the three of us are here.
I think from my standpoint, the biggest change is that they are addressing the issues that were identified in our, in our status as a priority school. And I, we questioned last year whether we were addressing those issues or if we were, and now it seems like it's more focused that we're trying to improve those things that they've, that they identified for us as qualifications for being in that program, so. At least it gives us a shot at, are we getting better at what?
Right.
Okay.
Any questions from anybody for? Steven, you commented, and I'm just gonna pick on you because you said something about according to their goals versus ours. So is there a difference as far as what maybe we're focused on or that we haven't?
Set up beforehand. And once we start getting into the priority plan, and so they're very matched, so we really need to work. It's good to see we're going in that direction, or else heading in the same direction, leaving the same thing.
I'd say that even after our first meeting, the things that we were gonna implement, they came in and really they had them in their plan and we already had plans to implement those processes. So it was, I, I would say we've implemented about 98% of what was on that plan already. So we're waiting on one piece that I think will be a big piece at the end and I think we're in really good shape.
We're starting a tendons campaign, they're in the accounts, we're pushing that. And that's something we wanted to do beforehand, just when they came in, they made it part of our plan.
Good. Thank you. No. Open and honest.
No.
All right. Any other questions? Not, we'll go on to get reports that are out there. And I had one question, we didn't get, go to have one good thing here, but Joey, you had something with regard to working on class schedules for next year. I mean, so is that, and the thought I had, because the discussion we had had maybe last year already, was with regard to around with schedules changing or being able to maybe we'll have another class period in the day? Is that true? Okay, and, and that, and oh, I guess along with that, the question would be, you know, so are we thinking that we'll have, create some time, create time to have discussions with two kids before, like the next, like this spring, kind of getting them orientated towards?
Actually, that's actually part of our priority plan as well. That's actually the piece we haven't solidified yet. And that is creating a scaffolding for kids, whether they're in recovery or whatever that looks like, and having a plan of how we're going to address each kid. So that's actually a nice piece that's coming out of priority is gonna be something that Steven's gonna be working with counselors on here shortly. So that's kind of the last piece. But the, the main focus, I believe, for my side, when we're, when we're working on scheduling, I already put the eight period day together. I'm working two different schedules, a seven period and a eight period, just in case we have a glitch of some sort. But I think that eight period day is really gonna open up some options for our, for my selfishness, for my E L program kids right now. You know, creating some specific coursework that we could create structure for them across our board, so they can start transitioning out and helping our newcomers program get a little stronger that way. So that's kind of a piece I think that we'll be able to, and that should shrink down some of our other classes size-wise and hopefully make things just a little better. I'm excited.
Anything else to add?
I think throughout those reports, I think there's another 14 programs that have been identified and people who have been highlighted or spotlighted. And that's something that we started a year ago to try to make sure that we're, we're looking at those good things that are coming in our school. We share it with you and the public and, you know, so I know that we don't spend a lot of time going over them here, but I hope that you as board members take the time to just read about the quality of the people you have here and how they're being highlighted and spotlighted in here. Because I think it does take, it does, does take considerable effort for them to find those spotlight programs and find that. Because sometimes there's more than one or, one or two, you know, so they have to be kind of selective. They're, they're gonna get about 10 times to do this and so. If you look, they've, they've highlighted some pretty powerful programs as well, so, and people.
And it's always good to see those people recognized for their efforts. And that's a good thing too, so.
And I think one of the things that we've probably done a better job than a year ago, we used to just put them in here and expect that our teachers and everybody would just come on and read. But now we do a better job of letting the staff know that they've been spotlighted for this program, so.
We'll call them and tell them, I've highlighted you every night, what I do. It's a good thing. It's a bad thing. Highlight. So brought that to, now people hear spotlight, you smell.
We got some good things?
Yeah, I was gonna say, one good thing, Dr. Lethal.
I just wanna, I'd say being able to watch the One Act play and, and see our kids shine in there and, and watch all of our kids just all kind of come together. I think the coaches did an amazing job. I think the kids really bought into it. They were a neat group of kids to be around. And by far the most respectful kids, every, every place that I got to go with them, our kids by far were the best kids in those buildings. Outstanding job with them and I just can't wait till next year.
It'd be hard for me to mention just one. I'd echo that. I think Flight Production did an outstanding job. Talked about it this year. Our winter sports are off to a good start. Wrestlers are four and two. Got fourth in a level team tournament. Our boys are one and O at this point. Outstanding in, lost a close game. So, so that's been good. On a personal note, I have a grandson that's two weeks old, so that's been exciting. Waylon James.
Congratulations. Is that the first one?
I'd like to highlight what I highlighted in my report. Our C P E teachers, we talked a little bit like that. If you've ever worked with them or come across them, they're energetic, enthusiastic, they're kind of new ideas. We needed some of that rejuvenation, just pumped them up a little bit. FFA did a good job with that. So that was a good hire you've done the last couple of years to get this program going and running. And I appreciate their enthusiasm and things.
Question before we get it. Are we doing the tractor toy thing this year?
I have not heard anything about that yet, but I have not asked that question either.
It's on the calendar for February.
They are?
It's on the calendar for February 23rd, along with the breakfast.
But I think that was reserved last year, so I need to follow up on that.
Because I got asked by a patron and I said, I don't know, I don't think that we've, I mean, I, I think it's still on, but I don't have the date for you, so.
They haven't said it's not on.
Two new sponsors, that's something.
If you would confirm that, so I can.
Last discussion, that, that Dan Saboda, who is the FFA alumni person that I think was the most involved in that, that, that he wanted that moved to that, that FFA week or the Ag week where we did the, the pancake breakfast and so, yeah, whether it's.
So it's still on?
As far as I know, but it, it was gonna be moved from December to February.
Brian, do you know, has, has there been much discussion with Casey or Charles?
I do not know.
I'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Like I said, I think, I think Dan Saboda had more to do with it than anybody, an FFA alumni member.
One good thing.
I had during Friday intervention time, I had several things from them that are making it work.
I highlighted the fact that we made it through our fifth day of our A P L training. A P L just stands for the last name of the, of the presidents or trainers, right, as the trainers. But it's really, it's, it's very intense, specific instruction strategies. So when you teachers finish up their second or their fourth and fifth day of it, this last week, and we had a second day of admin training. A lot of things to make that happen and, you know, doing this during the school year with as many teachers. And gone, and then every teacher gets onboard, covering classes and doing things so that, so that most teachers can be there.
Okay, well, for me, as Mr. Comley mentioned it a little bit about the planning committee for the family night, it was really amazing to see it and be part of that meeting last week. I just think that a school district, it's a huge event, like we have a really good attendance and this year it's, it seems to, that it's gonna be a lot, a lot better than other years. And on the personal side, I'm excited for vacation.
For the what?
For vacation.
Well, yeah.
We've highlighted Mr. Harper and Mr. Hosier and, and I guess I'll just speak on FFA as, as the organization where, just because we were talking about that before, did have the opportunity to, to judge their L D E, which is Leadership Development Experience? I'm gonna guess on that last one, but just, just as a, the program as a whole where the vast majority of the contestants that were, were females, and I know that that organization has, has moved more towards that. And it's not, you know, it was FFA, Future Farmers of America, and now I think they go by the FFA organization. It's not necessarily an acronym meaning farmers. And just from personal experience, the skills learned in those, you know, those programs, I've applied to, to my profession and a lot of the leaders in the Ag community, I know, were involved in, in FFA. So it was, it was good to get, get back involved in that and, and see those competitions taking place because it seems a, a little bit silly or a little funny when you're doing those demonstrations, but it, it applies to the real world 100%.
Well, I have something that's good and then I have something that's bad for Mr. Cosick, but I'll do the good first. We've been getting some good weather, reasonably decent weather that they can continue to progress on the new addition. And I seen a truck that I thought maybe was carrying panels today, but I don't think it was. So that's a good thing. And Mr. Cosick, the bad thing for you is you have moved down the ladder. That grandson has moved to the top and you don't carry as much weight as you used to.
I'm not sure I could have gotten much lower.
Just like he's standing on one.
Stand on the ground.
I know.
I think that's probably true.
Well, I'm gonna have a personal success. I'll share my daughter Kylie, pastor boards for occupational therapy, so she is now employable. So that's a wonderful thing.
I have one school and a couple, and two personal, my two personal, I, I had a granddaughter born two weeks ago, number nine. And that poor young lady's got two older sisters that she's gonna have to load to deal with. And my son graduates on Friday with his doctor from U S D, so pretty excited for him. And I do want, or did want to highlight for you, Marv Aldrich announced his, his retirement effective the end of this school year. But he does so much work behind the scenes, you know, and I know he gets some accolades for his lawn mowing and painting of the fields. But he, he does so much behind the scenes that, that we just take for granted and we won't know all those things till he's gone and miss it. And so while I highlighted him here, I think he's done a, he's made a, made a career out of a job and has taken a huge price, gonna be huge shoes to fill. So that's positive employee has made a difference for a lot of years, so.
Things are going well in the office. I have my tree up at home and my cookies baked, so.
Doesn't get any better.
No, I did not. Sorry. They're in the freezer for Christmas.
So I'd like to echo the sentiments about One Act. I, I, I think that One Act was very impressive this, this year. And one of the most impressive things, I think, about One Act itself is the variety of kids that, that it brings to the, to the, to the stage. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of kids that they make friends with people that they haven't ever met before, or they might know them a little bit. And I think that that's a really cool thing about One Act because you can, you can be in it for, for a year. It's bet, yes, it's better if you're, you know, learning how to act for several years in a row, but I think it's really cool what they, what they can accomplish. And I have another thing too. Has anybody seen the Christmas tree out in the, in the entryway? That is a beautiful tree.
Decorated by a student.
That's what I heard.
Money into it.
That's what I heard. So that's, that's a super, you guys have to look at this tree because it's really impressive. Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, because it, yeah, no, he, what's his name? Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, well, anyway, it, it was, it's beautiful. So if you haven't seen it. Really? Yeah, no, that's, that was, that's super cool, so.
If you look on Facebook, he started, he started a little business, he's talking to your wife, and the wife said, you need to put yourself out there.
He does. Uh huh. Well, very cool. That's neat. So anyway, I thought it was really neat and I wanted to make sure that he was highlighted, so.
For me, so my son has done wrestling since he was about five and last year he decided not to do it. So just going back out there this year. And I was a little nervous because they're doing it at the field house this year. So you've got kids trying to go to wrestling practice and then all kinds of distractions around them. It's pretty impressive how, how focused those guys keep them. It's, there's no outside, noise outside of those mats. So props to all those coaches for keeping those kids on the task that they're supposed to be performing.
I wish I could say the same about the girls' basketball focus.
I wish I could say the same about the girls' basketball focus.
Brian, do you, you guys have a meeting with the foundation?
Yeah, we met a week ago and numerous things were discussed, but just one thing I'd highlight was Lumer Yadlitska did, did a lot for the organization, was on, on many committees and, and he stepped down from our group. And Joyce Ballmert took up the role of treasurer and so she was able to re, refinance is the right word, some of the, the CDs for more than double the interest rate than what they were. So that end of it's going the right direction, so just wanted to highlight that because those that do give to the foundation, we try to spend those dollars wisely and we try to make that money work for us the best that we can. So now some of these CDs are fairly sizable and when you add a, over a percent of interest, it, it does help out. So she's done a good job of making, staying on top of that for our group.
I guess I have comments with regard to Superintendent DeBau. I think you all received a form, if you didn't get it on, on the computer, you should have a form now. Again, that process will do the formal review at the January meeting. But I, I would request that you either fill it out and mail it to me in the next week or send it to me an email. I don't care if it'll compile it and it will kind of go through that process. I guess other things, I've got Dr. Hazing, we talked a little bit before, but I would said I would repeat it with regard to the in, in town bus route, we have a review of that in January as well. And with regard to those members of the board that will be going into their last year to apply, you need to have that information turned out, turned into the Hellback County Office by February fifteenth. So I think we'll have four open slots currently, since Nina was fulfilling a, a partial term. There will be four, four spots to fill, so. Anyhow, with regard to other things, I will pass out and just a self evaluation for each of the board members. Again, this is kind of just a reminder, it's two sided, of looking at the things that you, you know, to get you focused on, the things that you signed up to serve for as far as what we have as far as responsibility and what our, what our processes will be and understand those things. And so if you have that, you kind of go through that and you could turn that into the main office. In addition.
You don't have to sign it, but it.
Yeah, it just.
But what it does is, is helps us understand where, where you need support from us, okay? So it's not, Sally will compile it, we won't know about what, okay? But if you could do that, that'd be good.
So then they bring to our office?
Yep, and then you'll compile it and kind of say, okay, we need to work at doing a better job supporting our board this way.
This next sheet that I'm passing down has to do with all, or the different committees that we have. And honestly, I'll be, I'll be thoroughly honest, I, I did a, not a, a good job of helping get traction in that to make sure that we met regularly in different areas. And I think from my focus standpoint, that, that's something that we will be more, more so trying to accomplish in the upcoming year. And whether it's me leading or somebody else leading, I think that's something to, to continue to pursue. So as, as you look at that, maybe look at those items and say, yes, this is something that definitely interests me. And so as we decide to, you know, set committees in the new year, hey, whoever ends up being the president, you know, pass this off to them and say, hey, these are the things I'm interested in. So maybe you could set me up on this committee and, and we can all, you know, be, feel like we're contributing to the greatest extent possible, so. And again, in addition to that, if you have some things that you're most proud of from this current year and things that we still would like to achieve, please include those comments as well, so.
I should tell you this, that our strategic planning day, that was the Wednesday before Thanksgiving because of weather, got moved and it's now January twentieth. John Cook, the volleyball coach from Nebraska, will open it with, he'll do the morning presentation. And the people from Thought Exchange will actually run ours, three hundred staff members and whatever board members come to that. So if you, if you come to it, you'll get to participate, you won't spectate, you're gonna sit down with, and there's a, there's a part of the Thought Exchange where you answer a few questions and then it puts you in a group of things that you're interested in talking about. So your, your input will be just as valuable as any of our employees. So if you have ideas on things we can do to improve our school, again, that's Monday, January twentieth, Monday is the King Day. No school for students obviously on that day, but our staff will be here for that workshop.
That's eight thirty-nine, what time is it?
I think eight, eight o'clock is probably when we'll start. Okay, so if you, if you come, you'll get a chance to participate along with our staff to, to give ideas on how we could make us feel better.
And I'm sure we'll get a reminder at our board meeting in January too, you can be able for that.
So we would encourage you to attend, if, if you're not here and you can't, that's fine, but that's.
I don't know if there's anything else to bring up?
Brian's got a Christmas concert, you better get going.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make that motion.
Who is seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries, thank you, enjoy the concert. Thank you. Virginia, you have a couple of things to sign.